Hello, everybody. Welcome to our city council meeting. We'll start with an invocation, which we observed by a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, where my nation, under God, invincible, liberating justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Corliss.
Here.
Halliburton.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Sted.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. And next up, we've got council minutes for approval.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the amendments for the meeting on September 30th, 2025.
Second. Motion, a second clerk?
Corliss.
Yes.
Halliburton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Now, we've got two items under special business. First off, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and so I have a proclamation to read. I want to thank council member Corliss for asking, requesting that we do this to bring attention to this issue, this cancer that affects so many women. And so first I'll read it, and then I'm going to give this to Kathy. Whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer in women, and whereas one in eight women will be diagnosed with the disease in their lifetime, and in 2025, over 300,000 women and approximately 3,000 men will be diagnosed with breast cancer. And whereas doctors estimate that approximately 18% of breast cancers are hereditary, and individuals whose family history puts them at increased risk for breast cancer should discuss with their doctor or qualified health professional the proper prevention and early diagnosis strategies. And whereas Idaho currently ranks sadly last in the nation for breast cancer screening rates, and whereas with new early diagnosis strategies being introduced, the five-year survival rate for breast cancer patient increases significantly. And whereas the Breast Cancer Awareness Month serves as an opportunity to bring awareness of the disease and to encourage individuals to have a plan for regular detection and screening for the disease in its early stages. And whereas it's vital that those affected by breast cancer have access to quality, affordable care, and that research of all forms of breast cancer continues to be vigorously supported. And whereas establishing Treasure Valley Breast Cancer Awareness Month can be a unifying rally call for giving our cancer survivors and fighters the care, hope, and support they deserve. I declare October 2025 as Treasure Valley Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Boise.
Madam Mayor, if I may just make a couple of remarks here.
Please.
Okay. And thank you very much for the proclamation. So many of us here today know someone who's been faced with breast cancer, a mother, a sister, a daughter, a friend, maybe even ourselves. We've seen the strength it takes to get up in the mornings and keep fighting, and we've witnessed the quiet courage in the waiting rooms, the laughter that hides fear, and the grace that carries families through the hardest days. As we know, with breast cancer and all diseases, it doesn't just touch the person. It really has a ripple effect through families and the communities. But also, so does hope. Hope grows when we show up for one another, when we remind a friend to get screened, when we walk together, when we listen, and when we lift someone, lift someone up on the days that they can't lift themselves. For me, this month is deeply personal. I lost my sister to breast cancer, and not a day goes by that I, you know, don't think of her and think about her strength and her courage as she continued through that journey. She reminds me of why we keep fighting for awareness, for research, and for each other. And maybe go and continue to honor those we've lost by living with the same courage and compassion they showed us and by holding hope really close to our hearts. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. And now I have the appointment of Emily Share to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term ending October 7th, 2028. Emily is with us tonight. I so appreciate your willingness to serve. I'm going to ask that the council take this up, and then you're welcome to say a few words if you'd like.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent for the appointment of Emily Share to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term ending October 7th, 2028.
Without objection. All right, you're official. Congratulations. I so appreciate your willingness to serve in this role. We rely on residents from around the city to help shape the direction of so many of our different departments and ultimately our city through commission work, and you'll be a great addition as a user and lover of our parks to this commission. Thank you so much. And I've got, I'm going to hand something over to you, and so I'll just walk down to hand it over to you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Emily, thanks for writing your bike down tonight. I see your helmet there. I just want to add a couple of words to what the mayor already said. I've served on as the council liaison to Parks and Rec Commission before, and it really is an important role. A lot of times Parks and Rec Commission is making recommendations to council, and we listen to those recommendations very closely. We know that you're diving in deep, you know, doing some of the work that we can't do, and we really rely on the expertise and that engagement with the community. I come from a history where I know the power of what volunteers can do to strengthen an organization. So I just want you to say thank you for stepping up, volunteering your time, and adding something significant for the community and making our job a lot easier on council. So thank you for stepping up into this role.
Well, enjoy your time. So appreciate it. All right, now we have the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'd ask unanimous consent that we pull the travel requests from the consent agenda to be considered separately.
Without objection. Great.
All right, Madam Mayor, I move approval of the travel requests. The travel requests.
Second. So I'll just say item.
Item.
B1. Yes. Okay, we have a motion, a second discussion. Clerk?
Corliss.
Yes.
Halliburton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willetts.
No.
Five in favor, one opposed. Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the remaining items in the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion, a second discussion.
Madam Mayor, I'd just note Resolution 55025, the resolution approving the collective labor agreement between the city and the police officers. Very grateful that we're able to get this done and hope that our police officers appreciate the bonus and the raise that they're getting this month. And we just want to say, express my gratitude to everybody involved in those negotiations for being able to bring that to its conclusion, and both on city staff and in mayor's office and among union leadership. So and command staff over at VPD, and we hope that what we've provided in that will give the officers their ability to do their job and not have to stress about their families being taken care of.
Right, and I just want to flag before you vote some exciting housing advancements that are on this agenda. First off, there's a CIPRA grant award agreement between Boise, our Housing and Community Development Division and the US Treasury. This agreement paves the way for the US Treasury to reimburse the Idaho Community Foundation for the impact that Supportive Housing Investment Fund and Wraparound Services for Families Exiting Homelessness has in our region. So when we demonstrate in partnership with Boise State that housing folks and providing them these services to get them on the road to self-sufficiency saves the community money, could be saves hospitals' monies, the jails' money, the city money, the county money, then the Treasury Department will reimburse the funds that have been used so that we can continue to provide those services. And as you'll remember, council approved $7.5 million to launch that fund at the community foundation. So far, we have about $6 million in community pledges to match that. And this CIPRA award from the Department of Treasury is another $6.5 million. So city dollars, as the council president said so well, when you moved approval of those dollars will be tripled ultimately when we meet our fundraising goal, and because of this grant, only two cities in the country were selected. And then I just want to point out, excuse me, that there's a resolution also to help fund the Denton Street Apartments Affordable Housing part of our land bank and one other home partnership agreement as well. So we continue to make progress on our commitment to creating smart public-private partnerships to provide housing at Boise budgets, both for those working that are looking for a place to live and those that are experiencing homelessness and becoming housed because of this partnership. So thanks to everybody involved. Clerk?
Corliss.
Yes.
Halliburton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thanks. We've got a couple on second, or maybe, yeah, two ordinances on second reading.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that all ordinances on the second reading calendar be read by number and title only and filed for the third reading calendar.
Without objection.
ORD-33-25 in ordinance CAR25-4 for property located at 2626 and 2680 South Maple Grove Road, amending zoning classifications of the city of Boise City to change the classification of real property particularly described in Section 1 of this ordinance and adjacent rights of way from R-1A residential large lot to R-1C residential traditional, setting forth a reason statement in support of such zone change and providing an effective date. ORD-34-25 in ordinance ZOA25-4, amending Title 11, Chapter 7, Section 2, Boise City Code to add live/work as an allowed use within certain sub-districts of the Barber Valley specific plan area to increase the maximum dwelling units per acre within the SP02-0C sub-district of the Barber Valley specific plan area and providing an effective date.
Thank you. And now, third reading.
Madam Mayor, I move that further reading of ORD-32-25 be dispensed with. In the record reflect, they have been read the third time in full.
Second. We have a motion, a second clerk?
Corliss.
Yes.
Halliburton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. ORD-32-25 in ordinance CAR25-10 for property located at 8750 North Bogart Lane and adjacent rights of way annexing 11.96 acres of certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Boise City, establishing and determining the land use classification of said 11.96 acres as R-1C residential traditional, establishing and determining the sensitive lands overlay district of said acres, setting forth a reason statement in support of such annexation and zone change, directing the city engineer to lodge and file a legal description and map for said annexed lands and territory, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Auditor, the Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, providing that a copy of said legal description and map of said annexed lands and territory be recorded with the Ada County Recorder and filed with the Ada County Assessor and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing an effective date.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that ORD-32-25 be approved.
Second. We have a motion, a second discussion. Clerk?
Corliss.
Yes.
Halliburton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, thanks. We're now going to move into new business. We have a subdivision hearing and then one regular public hearing with the reckless subdivision, SUB2528. Got Matt Dennis, welcome from the city. Centurion Group is it Tammy Crawford or someone else from Centurion? Wonderful, welcome. The applicant, is the neighborhood association here? We don't expect you to be here, but... And then is Carter Durst here to testify? Is Carter online? Nope. All right. Somebody had registered interest beforehand. What I'll do, is anybody here to testify on this subdivision? Okay, so after we hear from Matt, I'll see if you're in agreement with the terms and conditions of the staff report. If you are, we'll take it from there. Great, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good members of council. The item before you is a preliminary plat for residential subdivision comprised of 12 buildable and one common lots located at 911 North Mitchell Street on 1.69 acres in an R1C residential traditional zone. The property currently contains a single-family house that's planned to be retained with 11 lots being subdivided behind it to the west. All of the proposed lots conform to the dimensional standards of the R1C zone. The proposal includes public street improvements and extensions, all of which are proposed with detached sidewalks as required by the development code. The proposal also includes a private road in the northwestern corner of the site. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved an associated variance request to deviate from the streetscape standards and access and connectivity requirements in order to waive the requirements for detached sidewalk along the northern side of that private road, as shown here. Detached sidewalks are being proposed along the southern side of that private road adjacent to those buildable lots. Way correspondence was received prior to the commission hearing from the adjacent neighbor to the north, who confirmed with in-person testimony at the Planning and Zoning Commission that their concerns have been taken into account by the developer. In conclusion, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, and I will stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Matt, I just want to say I like your shirt, so... But additionally, could you talk to me, could you go back to the map that shows the project? So we considered an amendment to the zoning code a couple of months ago that talked about multifamily units and not facing, like, the backyards of other properties that we'd want them facing internally. Have we always allowed single-family detached homes that same right? Or, I mean, has it been just since the modern zoning code? Or has it been prior to that, that single-family homes have the right to face adjacent properties?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Nash, subdivisions are required to match like yards to the best extent practical. Obviously, there's instances where orientation doesn't allow that. In instances where a minor land division, you know, up to four lots would be proposed, the record of survey, a record of survey application cannot approve unlike yards, as in front to side or side to rear. But a subdivision does allow that with certain aspects, right? To the maximum extent practical.
Okay.
And additionally, the main concern being that the fronts of these homes are oriented in access toward the street, which all of these are. On the eastern side, you can see the overlays here might be a little difficult to see, but there is a road separating the eastern five houses. You know, those will all be fronted onto a street, and then on the western side, those are matching rear to rear on the far west and then rear to side on the on the west, just west of the transition from Mesquite Court to Indy Avenue.
Matt, additionally, having done a good deal of door knocking in this neighborhood just a couple of years ago, there's a lack of connectivity between some of the neighborhoods more along Mitchell Street and then those to the west. Do you know if there's any planned connections in the future that would connect these so that folks to the west of here would have greater access to amenities like Mariposa Park?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Nash, I'm not aware of any pathway proposals in the works. As far as this project goes, there's no western connection. That's all private property out to the west with single-family residential, so there is no immediate connection that could have been had here. Mariposa Park is nearby to the north, but it is separated by a private property that's containing a single-family house. So the connectivity here in this area was kind of a dead end.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further questions for staff? Are you interested in asking the applicant questions? Yep, okay. I'll have you, if you'll come on up on this one, you can let us know if you agree with the conditions, and then at least Councilmember Halliburton has questions for you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember David Crawford with Centurion Engineering. Is this on? Okay, thank you. We are in agreement with the conditions of approval as written. We're thankful to work with staff to come up with what we believe be an attractive asset to the city of Boise. And I'll stand for any questions you have.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yep.
No concerns here. Looks like a great little development. I just had a couple of questions out of curiosity. So it looks like you've got how many units in there?
12.
12.
Residential units, yes.
And single-story, two-story?
Single-story, for the most part. We are looking at maybe perhaps two stories. The builder slash developer does like to build single level when appropriate, but we've got a little bit of narrow lots that make configuring them a little different. So we haven't, we may have a few two stories in there.
Yeah, you know about the size, square footage size of the houses?
Believe we were looking between 12 and 1,800 square foot.
Yeah. I mean, I think this is great. It's interesting to me because we don't always see a lot of houses being built that size. Usually, they're significantly bigger, and so it's nice actually to see some smaller units being built just because they kind of come in at a more affordable price point, whether somebody's renting them or purchasing them. So we haven't seen a lot coming in under 2,000 square feet, so I was excited to see some smaller units going in. I think it makes sense. It creates a price point that's a little bit better, and it seems like it fits into this little sliver of a lot really nicely. So yeah, I was just curious about a couple of those things because this is some of the smaller development that we do like to see, especially in these areas. You don't own the lot above it, do you?
Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton, no, we don't own the lot up there. That was the neighbor that we spoke with during the Planning and Zoning Commission and had agreed during our neighborhood meeting to install a sight obscured fence on our property line. So I appreciate the good words on, from the builder standpoint. It is certainly a unique opportunity that he brings because most of the other stuff I work on is, you're correct, 2,000 and above. So it is a pretty good product, and we're happy to work with them.
Yeah, really excited to see that, and I don't know what the future is for that lot above it. It is, does look like a big lot with some potential for development, and to Councilmember Nash's point, I think that if that lot above it ever did develop, then there may be some opportunities for continued connection up on Indy Avenue over to Mariposa Park and maybe over to the streets on the other side. So it was just something that I was kind of happy to see this little sliver of a lot fit that many little houses on it. So good job.
Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton, thank you. It was, the thing that made it work was really the removal of the sidewalk on the north side that saved like 13 feet and allowed to allow these slots to become buildable at that point.
Thank you. Any further questions? Want to confirm? Nobody's here for this? Great. I'll, do you have something? Okay, I will close the hearing, and this is before you guys.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of SUB25-28, a preliminary plat for a residential subdivision comprised of 12 buildable and one common lot located at 911 North Mitchell Street on approximately 1.69 acres in an R1C residential traditional zone.
Second. We have a motion, a second discussion. Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
I was just going to note, I think that this project improves Mitchell Street and Mesquite with the new sidewalks, landscaping, street trees, meeting city standards for walkability. I think that the privacy concerns have been met with that fencing on the north. It was the north property line, and overall, this project, I think, is a really good example of thoughtful, small, in scale infill that supports our growth goals. I love the smaller footprint. I'd encourage the builder to also consider any accessibility offerings like zero-step entry and no raised thresholds where possible. But I think this will be a great product that can come online to support our residents.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just a quick comment here. Just wanted to give some thanks to the staff as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission for a little bit of flexibility with that variance. Sometimes I think with our code, we've got our goals that we're trying to achieve, and like sometimes there's some limitations that actually move us towards those goals, specifically building these really much smaller houses in these types of areas. So I appreciate the flexibility that was put in place to move towards these goals and the flexibility and the work with the developer to get us there. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, just one quick comment, and I too want to thank the builder and for putting this project forward. As I've heard a lot from my constituents in District 3, they are looking for smaller homes, but products that they can purchase. So this infill development, I think, offers a good fit within the community and some product that what I've been hearing people are looking to purchase. So thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, clerk?
Corliss.
Yes.
Halliburton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Madam Mayor, just really quick, as we move on to this next application, if you are here for any of the previous items on the agenda, don't feel pressured, like you have to stick around for the entire thing. So if you need to peace out, then, you know, we're not going to be offended by you walking out on the last item.
I was about to say the same thing. Anybody that's done is excused. You're welcome to stay, but you are also excused. I realize I usually say that earlier in the day. Thanks, thank you. Okay, so next up, we have CR25-18. We've got Madison, welcome back, Lockhorn for the city. The applicant, Becky Isguire? Oh, hi. You don't need to get up yet. I'm just kind of getting us organized. We don't expect, I don't see Judy Herman from West Valley. Don't expect Judy. Is she online? Okay, so there's no neighborhood association. I do have a couple of folks that have signed up, so I'll go through these names, and if you want to speak, but I didn't call your name, just come on up after I've finished calling names, and we'll take it from there. So we'll hear from staff, then the applicant, then the public.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I just wanted to, I think I noticed in a letter submitted from the Neighborhood Association that she was not able to be present tonight, but did submit her comments in a written form.
Great, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Before they get started, I would like to recuse myself from this decision. In the last year, I've asked staff on multiple occasions to consider acquisition of this property, and my heart's still kind of set there, so I'm going to recuse myself from this tonight.
Okay, and so you had a question? Perfect, thank you. All right, so with that, we'll start with Ms. Lockhorn.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the application before you is a request for a rezone of approximately 2.22 acres located at 2911 North Five Mile Road from R1C residential traditional to R2 residential compact. The approval criteria is summarized on your screen for a rezone application. The application before you today is not reviewing any design elements or proposed uses for the site. The property is located on Five Mile Road, an arterial roadway that contains a level-three bikeway. The future land use designation is mixed use in which the R2 zone is allowed. It lies within the Ustick and Five Mile Neighborhood Activity Center in Abut's Comba Park to the north. The surrounding area is comprised of single-family homes to the southeast and west. North of the park is a multifamily development, which is also zoned R2. As outlined in the project report, there are multiple goals, principles, and policies within the comprehensive plan and the development code that support the proposed rezone. This is an area where it is expected to see the R2 zone, which provides a transitional zone between mixed use typically found along arterial and collector roadways and lower-density residential zones. The proposed rezone is anticipated to accommodate a 45-unit townhome-style multifamily development. As described in the project report, the proposed use is subject to design review approval and the neighborhood transitional standards. However, the application before you tonight is only the rezone and of the property, and no design elements or uses of the anticipated development are part of the rezone application. As outlined in your late correspondence packet in the project report, public comments were... As outlined in your late correspondence packet in the project report, public comments were received and are summarized on the screen. And then as stated within the project report, the rezone meets all of the findings for a rezone as shown on your screen. In conclusion, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the rezone, and I will stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Could you go back to the slide prior? Could you walk us through these? You went off them quite quickly.
Yeah, so for a rezone, they have to follow, they have to meet all the criteria. Point one, though, is one of the criteria. I misplaced a checkmark. With the criteria that it meets with item one is letter A that, or sorry, letter B, which is the amendment is needed because it changed conditions or circumstances of the surrounding area. Finding two is it's in the best interest of the public convenience and general welfare. And then item three is discussing like scale and height of the network of the initial zoning and if the rezoning is compatible with surrounding development. And item four is if it is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Can you describe what the changed conditions or circumstances have been?
Yeah, so for this rezone. Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, members of the council, the rezone has certain changed conditions, which is partly due to the arterial roadway, which is Five Mile Road. In addition, the area is a neighborhood activity center which focuses on having a variety of uses and supporting, you know, those uses to reduce vehicle miles in that area.
One more, do you know how many rezones we've done since the modern zoning code?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I do not know that number off the top of my head.
Further questions?
Yeah, Madam Mayor. I was looking through the, well, first of all, this is like one of the weirdest lot shapes I think I've ever seen. There's a tiny little corner that I think connects over to the canal. I was looking through the pathways master plan and we do have a potential future pathway connection there. I think kind of based off of my understanding is it looks like if there was a pathway going in in the future, it would go on the other side. I'm just trying to figure out whether or not like we would need to try to protect any sort of easement on that tiny, tiny little corner. But again, I think looking at it, it looks like it may go on the other side. I'm not sure if you can speak to that at all.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm not exactly sure which side of the canal that that pathway would be on with the master pathway plan. However, with the rezone, we would not be requesting the easement that would come with the development of the properties either through a design review application or a subsequent planning and zoning application.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I just want to note, Councilmember Halliburton's right, this piece looks like Tennessee. It's like just opposite. The hottest, the hottest shape. I had a follow up question on the change circumstance for the rezone. You had mentioned about the Neighborhood Activity Center. The Neighborhood Activity Center isn't new, is it? I mean, we've had that before. I guess I'm wondering, is that a change or is that just a, an additional reason?
Madam Mayor, members of the commission, it is an additional reason. And in addition to like change conditions for the area, like population increase in the city of Boise as well as like the need for additional housing options in the area as well to provide that mixture of housing to reduce vehicle miles traveled for the area.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, Madam Mayor. Yeah, sorry, one more question. So because we're looking at this as, I guess, without the, it still should go to design review. Is there any, are there any other changes or further density that the applicant could take to change things between now and through design review to make it more dense or taller or things like that? I know that the height will come through, kind of like formalized through design review, but are there other considerations for further density that could happen in the approval here before the project came to be?
Madam Mayor, members of the commission, currently it's all conceptual. So in theory, the applicant could do something completely different if this rezone is proposed. So at this time, it's all conceptual.
Thank you. What's, Madam Mayor, sorry, one more question. So what's the, can you remind me what they're proposing for like units per acre or however we quantify that? And then what would be what the possibility is on this rezone?
Madam Mayor, members of the commission, for the, for what they're proposing for their type of development, it's forty five unit townhome style, but multifamily development. The R two zone does not have a density cap. So depending on the type of housing, in theory, you maybe could have a few more. But it depends on, you know, the design of the housing that they are providing. They're providing townhome style, which is more the walk up style of units versus a standard apartment under one roof complex.
Thank you. And I imagine it would be tricky to get, because of the shape of this property, it might be tricky to work with to get something much more dense.
Madam Mayor, members of the commission, depending on the design, of course, yes, it could be tricky. The R two zone is capped at a max height of four stories, not to exceed forty five feet. So there is that height limit related to this zone as well.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Just kind of reading through some of the planning and zoning transcripts, it looks like there was quite a bit of conversation related to the height. And I think that my understanding is although it's conceptual and this is just the rezone, the current proposal or conceptual design is thirty five feet. And if they were going to build higher than thirty five feet, they would be required a higher or a further setback.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that is correct. There are the neighborhood standards that will be reviewed within the design review application that come into play when you have development that is adjacent, abutting, an R one C zone or a single family home regardless of zone in order to have a transition for those developments.
Yeah, so just to follow up there again, I think that the max height allowed with the current setbacks that they propose would be thirty five. And so they could add more density, but if they wanted to add more density, they would actually have to have a further setback to go higher than thirty five feet.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that is correct.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. So kind of on that same line of thought and looking at the height of these, I think I saw in our late correspondence that the height is proposed at thirty five feet for the townhomes. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, members of the commission, due to it being a conceptual site plan, I did not review any elevations. So I would have the applicant.
Yeah, and I think I was looking at that as a, sorry, let me see. The three stories tall topping out at thirty six feet was what was in that, and understanding this is a conceptual drawing. I'm wondering, the properties that are to the south, I believe, are single family homes? Are those single story, do we know, or?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that they are single story homes. In the R one C zone, the max building height is three stories not to exceed forty feet. And the R two zone is four stories not to exceed forty five feet. Depending on how you, how high of ceilings you want in your type of design, the max height difference is about five feet between the zones. In theory, you know, the R one C zone, you can build a structure that is forty feet tall, not to exceed that three story limit.
Thank you.
Evening, brother. All right, thank you. We'll now hear from the applicant.
All right. My name's Becky Isagary. My address is forty eight eighteen West Camus Street, Boise, Idaho. So, good evening. I'm here to request a rezone from R one C to R two for a two acre parcel on Five Mile just south of Eustick. Is my? There we go. The subject parcel is located within a quarter mile radius of the Five Mile and Eustick Activity Center. This area already functions as a designated mixed use hub that brings together grocery, retail, restaurants, financial services, schools, a park, and a planned pathway running north, south along the Settlers Canal. The area is well connected by public transit with two bus stops at the intersection, making the site both highly accessible and walkable to daily services. The location is point two miles south of the transit line surrounded by shops, services, and daily destinations within biking or walking distance. The area already functions as a mixed use area. I can confirm this from my, my own daily bike commute down both Eustick and Five Mile. I regularly see residents walking to nearby businesses, kids coming to in front of school. There's about seven schools in this area. I also see a lot of people waiting at the both, both those bus stops there. The, the property also directly borders Comba Park to the north. This park has a beautiful community garden, a little play area for the kids, and just tons of space to hang out in. So it just makes sense to have this as a higher density parcel. The parcel has a comprehensive plan designation of mixed use and lies within a designated neighborhood activity center. This designation calls for higher density mixed development that combines housing, jobs, and everyday services while discouraging low density development. Rezoning to R two not only aligns with the comprehensive plan's goal for compact, walkable growth within activity centers, but it also creates a more compatible transition to nearby homes. Under the R C one zone, buildings can reach thirty five feet at the setback with no transition requirements. In contrast, the R two zone must meet the neighborhood transition standards, which do require additional setbacks, height reductions adjacent to an R one C zone. This provides more separation and privacy for the adjacent homeowners, meaning the R two is actually less impactful than the current zoning designation of R one C. This request, this request meets the approval criteria by responding to the change conditions in the area and aligning with the comprehensive plan, which calls for higher density within activity zones, which then strengthens the transit and then the businesses in the area. The proposed R two zone provides attainable housing, supports a healthier, more connected community, and places residents within walking distance of parks, schools, and transit and everyday services. The density is complementary and compatible with surrounding uses. And the rezone is fully consistent with the city's long term vision for sustainable mixed use neighborhoods. Thanks, and I'll stand for some questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Madam Mayor.
Yep.
Thank you. It is a great area of town. Know it well.
Excellent, yeah.
It is fantastic. There's so many amenities there and, and I'm, I know that the people that live there and also people that frequent the park really, really enjoy it. And I frequent that Albertson's quite frequently, so I know it well. I'm very curious about the legal definition here because, you know, in order to get a rezone, something has to have changed. And the city of Boise did a massive rewrite of all of its zoning codes in past in twenty twenty three. What's changed in the last two years that would, would require a rezone that wasn't there before?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember, yeah, so we, the area has changed quite significantly. There's, there's, well, for one, there's transit within point two miles of this, of this location. There's, there's sidewalks, there's bike lanes, there's a grocery store, there's all sorts of businesses everywhere around there. You know, the rezone, you know, when, I'm not sure when was.
Twenty twenty three.
Twenty twenty three, yep. So I mean, the area is just continually growing, right? And, and if you want more transit along those transit lines, you're going to have to add more, more people to the area. And that, those, those folks would also support the local businesses that want to move in there as well.
So has, but has there been any change since twenty twenty three to the area?
I mean, I, I'm, more businesses than whatnot have moved in, I'm sure, yeah.
I know there is an ice cream place coming. I'm excited about that. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. What's going on with that tiny sliver of land that goes over to the canal? What are you doing over there?
Yeah, so that is just gonna be, let me just bring up, can you bring up my PowerPoint? I do have, Mayor, Councilmember, I do have just a conceptual layout here and kind of the elevations of what we're proposing. So yeah, you can see that kind of triangle on the west side. We just have that as open space. We're not really proposing anything. We will have like a little seating area there because it does abut up to that community garden just to the north of that site. So we are just planning to, to make it kind of like a nice little area where you can, you know, observe the, the garden and, and whatnot. And then to add to that, the pathway, I believe, is on the west side of the canal. So yeah, we.
Okay, thank you. So when you turn into our little sliver of a subdivision here, there's kind of an immediate sort of, is it a stub street that's over there to, to the left going, going south? Or is that just the way that the, the street is designed? Is it intentioned to be a stub street?
The, the, the one, yes, where the four plexes.
Yeah, when you first turn in and then you take a hard left there.
That is a stub street. Well, I mean, it just, I don't. Technically, no, it's not a stub.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's something more for design review. Just, it's interesting to me that there's kind of a stub looking street there right next to Five Mile Road as opposed to a, a different design that would allow for, for turnaround, but.
It's, it's basically, Mayor, Councilmember, so for, for when you design these things, you know, for fire purposes, you only need a turnaround if it's a hundred and fifty feet. Yeah, so, so we didn't put a turnaround. We're not intending for it to be a stub street because it's less than a hundred and fifty feet. We just kind of put a dot in right there. We don't continue, we don't, we don't anticipate that continuing on.
Perfect. And you've, you've been through this with planning and zoning. We're about to hear a lot of, you know, questions, I think, from neighbors specifically related to height. Can you talk a little bit about your plans for height?
Yeah, so you can see here, we have the elevation here up on the screen. So this, this, this elevation here is, is at thirty five feet. It's three stories. We have the garage, two story, or excuse me, two car garage on the bottom and then two livable stories above. The height is not going to exceed thirty five feet. And that is, you know, the height max in an R one C zone. So that, that, that is what we are proposing.
Yeah, and it looks like you probably could go higher if you increase the setbacks, but it also looks like those setbacks are probably, probably about where they need to be. Otherwise, you're going to have a hard time squeezing everything in there.
Yeah, exactly. And, and then the higher you get, I believe there's, there's, I think it's at thirty five feet. You have to then step it back. And I don't remember what that step back requirement is, twenty feet, something like that, yeah.
Yep.
Um, yeah, so we just kind of kept it under that thirty five. Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Madam Mayor. Yeah, thanks for bringing this proposal to us tonight. Kind of reading through some of the comments that were received in P and Z and taking a look at the project, definitely looking to maximize the space there with homes. I wondered if there was a consideration or potential future consideration for these two townhomes that are going to back up to those, what looks to be single family homes to maybe have those as a step down transition at maybe a two levels versus a three story height on those.
Mayor, Councilmember, yes. So we, we did try to position the majority of the homes just adjacent to the park on the north side. And we did actually move all of the homes. We had some concept drawings where we. We had some concept drawings where we were, you know, we had a little bit of a garage, or excuse me, a driveway space there. And we eliminated the driveway so we can push those homes to the north, so we would limit the impact on those neighbors to the south. So, we have done a lot to accommodate the neighbors as far as the design goes. And you can see here, I mean, the closest house sits, I believe it's about twenty feet from the property line, the kind of by that hammerhead right there. So, that one, and then it just kind of, as you can see, gets further and further apart, yeah, but...
Madam Mayor, just a follow-up. I think as you head into design review, I don't know what the plan is for looking at balconies or windows on that side. I think the privacy is really important. Those houses are there, and even though there's twenty feet there, when you get three stories up, you're looking into there. So, I think with consideration for windows and not having balconies on that side would probably be a good plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have another one? Okay. Now, I'll open this up for the public. As I said, I'm going to call out the names of folks that signed up. And if I don't call your name and you want to testify, just come on up after. I'll just ask people if there's a whole bunch of you to sit in the front chairs. First, we have Steve Redmond. Come on up. And then, after that, Karen Redmond, so you might as well make your way up here too, and Gary Tubbs. Make your way up.
Can I start?
Yeah, you can start. Look, I'm sorry, sorry. Of letting folks get it. And sir, if you end up wanting to spit while you're giving your testimony, somebody can pull a chair up, and that mic right there works too. Go ahead, Mr. Redmond.
Madam Mayor, councilors. Steve Redmond, one oh seven seven nine West Excalibur Street. As a longtime thirty-nine-year resident, we've seen the area evolve and change. We certainly are no strangers to change and growth in that area. Tonight, I am speaking out against the proposed rezoning application, CAR twenty-five eighteen. Our submitted written objections detail why I and others in the neighborhood oppose this rezoning change. We've been told this is just a rezone, so why speak up now? Our concerns can be addressed during design review. While the planning and zoning remarked in their hearing that the design review for this development would be administrative review only, that to us sounded like no public input going forward. We feel that tonight is our only chance to be heard. Instead of rezoning, let's look at an alternative. The city has a golden opportunity. Instead of putting up a congested concrete and asphalt canyon, we propose the city enhance the community. How? Acquire the land and expand Comba Park. Now, we're not urban designers, but it seems to us an expanded Comba Park would be a better use of that irregularly-shaped plot and provide many benefits to both District One and District Two residents. So, it comes down to a choice. Shoehorn a bunch of buildings into a concrete canyon or provide real value to the surrounding community. What would those contrasting choices look like? Do I have picture one?
You'll have to do your own slide.
Oh.
There's a thing.
I'm going to assume it's that. Whoop, there it is, okay. Here is, the top map represents the proposed development that you've seen. The bottom part represents our concept of what an expanded Comba Park would look like. On this picture, here's how the proposed townhouse layout could likely look, according to the developer's proposed plot and their stated intentions. Here is how an expanded Comba's park extra green space could look instead of that. On this picture, here's how proposed townhouses could likely abut and loom over adjoining neighborhood properties like ours, again, per the developer's proposed plot, building concept, and stated objections, intentions. Finally, here's how an expanded Comba Park could provide a more pleasant and thoughtful buffer with the adjoining community, as done by another Boise, West Boise Park. As my high school geometry teacher, Mr. Mitchell, would say, "Come, let us reason together." This is likely the only opportunity the city has to expand Comba Park. We're not designers, engineers, or even city councilors. We are, however, concerned residents that see an ideal opportunity to enhance West Boise's quality of life. It is time to do better. It is time to look at not what can be done, but rather what should be done. I respectfully ask this council to deny the rezoning application and instead expand Comba Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, actually. Is the property listed for sale right now?
Uh, there was a "for sale" sign there at one point. It's been... He's been trying to sell that property for quite a while.
Okay, I just saw it shake of the head. No. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Karen Redmond.
Madam Mayor, I had a question.
Oh, sure.
For the resident.
There's a question.
Hey, first of all, thank you so much for joining us on a Tuesday night, and it's a beautiful day. And I know we love these fall days, so thanks for being here instead of being outside. So, you have lived there for almost forty years.
Correct.
That's a long time.
Moved in in eighty-six while there were still vacant lots in that part of Excalibur Street and central place where we live now.
I've, you know, I've lived in West Boise for over two decades, and I've obviously seen a lot more infill. We're not strangers to it there. I'm curious, what have you seen in the last couple of years that would be a change of circumstance than what has been there in the past? I mean, part of the legal requirement for rezone is that something has to have changed. What has changed in the last two years that would require a rezone?
Traffic has gotten heavier on Five Mile. Don't know if that's what you're referring to. As far as businesses go, there have always been businesses up there in the Albertsons complex. There's a drugstore that's been there for quite a while, office park, this gas station on the corner. There hasn't really been much change in that regard that I am aware of recently. Maybe ten years ago, fifteen years ago, when things started getting built up around there, yes. But we saw that coming, and we thought, okay, fine. You know, area's going to grow and change. Let's grow and change as opposed to this kind of change.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we'll hear from Karen. Welcome. Just pull the mic down a little bit, please, so we're sure to hear you. I have to do that all the time.
Madam Mayor and council members, my name is Karen Redmond. My address is one zero seven seven nine West Excalibur Street. I am opposed to this rezoning proposal. Regarding the environment, the proposed development will remove all the existing mature trees. If new trees are added, it will take decades for them to achieve the same growth. Further, the asphalt roadway, cement walkways, and buildings will hold heat that cannot be compensated for by the minimal green space planned. Our neighborhood's privacy and quality of life would be destroyed by the intrusive second-story balconies and third-story windows. Those balconies and windows would have a direct line of sight into our adjoining properties, including interior spaces. The developer claims a generous buffer zone in their design. The proposed plan shows no such thing, particularly in the southeast portion of the lot. Another concern for us is increased traffic. Since the connection was made to Chindon Boulevard, Five Mile has become an attractive alternative to Eagle Road. Access from the neighborhoods to the east and west of Five Mile is difficult, especially during the morning and evening commutes. As an alternative, acquire the land to complement the existing neighborhood. Expanding Comba Park opens other possibilities benefiting the West Valley community, such as the Boise, excuse me, Blueprint Boise Plan Library, a community center, a skate park, or an arts center. While Boise has those facilities, they are located downtown, and the activity zone at Five Mile and Eustick is primarily shopping and businesses with little value for teens who might not be able to easily access downtown facilities. An expanded Comba Park might include a dedicated toddler playground, a bike path, or the Bugs Garden area could be expanded. In conclusion, I ask and urge you now to reject this zoning request.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Tubbs. Gary, welcome.
Gary Tubbs, one oh seven five seven West Excalibur Street, Boise, Idaho, thirty-three-year resident. I'm in opposition to the rezone. I refer you to my written statement for elaboration. The area is in Council District One and the Bus District Two. The proposal deviates from instruments of planning for city development, both the blueprint for Boise and the updated planning and zoning codes. Blueprint for Boise in introductory statements states, quote, "To help increase level of predictability for Boiseans about potential for future changes in their backyards and steer the development of community to areas where future development activity may be most desirable, theme two, a predictable development pattern," end of quote, which can only support current R one C zoning category. This rezone results in piecemeal destruction of those planning efforts, despite complaints of the developer that lot geometry allows only seventeen dwelling units on this parcel with R one C zoning. It should not be the responsibility of either the city nor neighbors to make it financially feasible. The proposed development exceeds the density of anything in the area, including nearby apartments at fifteen per acre. And noted by the developer's statement, quote, "Twenty dwelling units per acre meets the upper end of the density range envisioned for this area," quote. Blueprint for Boise WBA states, quote, "Consideration specific to the West Bench should include limits on overall lot coverage for infill development to protect the more open character provided by the area's larger lot sizes," quote. Please show picture. The blueprint gives example of inappropriate and appropriate infill, yet I see little difference of the inappropriate from the other image of a three-story unit of this developer in Garden City juxtaposed to a single-story home like those of the Excalibur neighborhood. The proposal is not consistent with many of the blueprint guidelines, but if you decide to approve this application, then please limit the dwellings to two stories and thirty dwelling units, more consistent with apartment density to the north rather than the sardine density of twenty dwelling units per acre. Constituents of both zones, or as both districts, have opposed the rezone before planning and zoning. I support the opposition statements of my neighbors, as well as written and oral. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are you Bradley Young?
Hi, Bradley Young.
Welcome, and then Florence Dempsey. At you, Florence, great.
One oh six five.
Bradley, will you pull this up a little bit?
One oh six five four, uh, West Excalibur Street. Sorry about the Band-Aid on my chin. I was walking with my little four-year-old, and he ran in front of me, and I took a header and got a road rash on my chin.
Well, it's a well-disguised Band-Aid. I hadn't noticed it.
Yeah.
Now, I notice it. I'm sorry. I'm glad that you weren't hurt worse.
Me too. So, let me see how this thing works. Okay, all right, so, well, this is... This is my last. Okay, so this first, this slide here that we're looking at is the, from Five Mile towards the subject property as it is right now. And if you look behind it, you'll see some really magnificent large maple trees, and I'm not sure of all the species, but the big one there is well over fifty feet. It's a huge maple tree. Okay, so, this big red circle here, it represents like a really thriving mini ecological zone that is supported by these trees. We've seen lots of wildlife there, squirrels, birds. I've even seen raptors with squirrels in their claws. Okay, what happened here? Oh, some of my slides are missing, the slides of the trees. Oh, here we go. Okay, wait a minute. So, the red circles on the top one, that's an overlay of the proposed development. And the red circles represent the areas of where some of the trees are. And then, down below, the green circles represent where those trees would be in the proposed development. So, that big fifty-foot maple tree there is that big green, big green circle, and then just down below that is where the trees are on my property. So, that's a picture of the big maple tree. And look at this thing. It's just huge. It's like a heritage tree almost. It's really magnificent. I'd hate to see that go. And this is kind of like what the canopy is like over there. And then, there's another big tree on the other side of the property, and here it is again. I'd like to see... And then, in front of the property, there's this giant, it's probably fifty or sixty feet, some kind of a pine tree. Now, I'm a little nervous, because they've gone and cut down some of the trees on that side very recently. And I'm afraid that now that I'm testifying about these trees, they're going to go and hack down the other ones. So, I don't know if there's anything we can do to help save those. But in any event, you know, I'm opposed to the development, but if it does go through, I hope there's something we can do to protect these trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Florence.
Good evening.
You can pull it down. Might be more comfortable. There you go. Yeah.
With my bad knee. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. As we were reviewing the trees, Steve indicated to me that one of those trees was there when he moved in thirty-nine years ago. Thirty-nine years ago. I'm here to talk about the traffic in the neighborhood. And I think that's probably the most that has changed since I've been there. I've lived there probably the last seven years, moved in with my husband, Brad. This picture here is a typical four o'clock in the afternoon, Five Mile. Now, if we look to the left of that picture, that is where cars from that new subdivision will be coming out on. The subdivision, when you drive into that new subdivision, it's going to be an end street. They're not going to be able to turn around unless there are police department, maybe fire department. Down Excalibur Street, we're a dead end as well. I have seen fire departments turn around there due to some situations in the neighborhood. So, that is a problem. We also have had several accidents on that corner from children just happened riding their bike. As a matter of fact, one of our neighbors are here. It was her child that was injured. What we could do, if we do have to have the association build a subdivision, we're going to need a center barrier. There's too many people in the suicide or standoff lanes. Cars are going in and out to get into those businesses, the Stinker, the Dollar Store, the Little Caesar's right there. So, if we could have a maybe right turn only on Five Mile, maybe that would help. But again, if we turn a right mile, a right turn on Five Mile, the first street that they could turn around in is Excalibur, which is also a dead end. We have many buildings to the south of us, that trailer park. We have several cars that park in our neighborhood during the weeks. Every day, we have several cars that don't belong to our neighborhood in our neighborhood. So, if this division is built, there's forty-five units, three bedrooms, two baths, correct? That's probably a two-family, two cars in each family. That's ninety cars. Who's going to use their garages? No one. They have nine guest parking. Nine guest parking spots. Where the rest of those residents going to park their cars? Maybe one in the garage, maybe two in the garage, maybe none in the garage. The traffic is going to be a concern. Here's a picture of, I think it was just this evening of the parking. Oh. Yes, those. This is a representative, if you can see, this is turning, making a right, making a right into Excalibur. This is a representative, if you can see, this is turning, making a right, making a right into Excalibur. Do you see all the cars parked there? This car is trying to come into our driveway when another, uh, in our street, when another car is coming out. Look how close those cars are.
I'm going to pass this along. You're at time, so I'd ask that you, I'll give you a wrap-up sentence as these are being passed along.
Here's a picture also of a tow truck driver coming down our street. He lives there. How's he going to pull his vehicle in there? It's a, it's a problem, the traffic. Not to mention the trees, the neighborhood, and so on and so forth. Thank you for your time, Madam Mayor and council members.
Thank you. Is anybody else here to testify on this item? I saw you pop up. Yeah, come on up. You are welcome. All you need to do is give us your name and then share with us what you'd like us to know. There's a timer that goes up here that, that will remind you if you get to, if you get to that point, but you also don't have to take it off. You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, I am Ashley. I have lived on Excalibur for the last thirteen years, one zero six six nine West Excalibur Drive. I am just here to say that I oppose it as well, and my reasons being, I am extremely concerned about the traffic. Uh, I am the person that have the daughter that did get hit. As we were, yeah, as we were walking to Albertson's, and I am concerned about the increasing traffic. My child is not the only one that runs around. There are several children in the neighborhood. The bus stop for the school also stops right in front of those apartments, and so people are racing through and trying to get through that parking lot to bypass the stoplight and bypass everything else. That is a concern as well. You were asking in the last five years what's changed. My husband and I go to Kumba Park frequently to go look at the Bugs Garden. We did that frequently. There has been so much pollution there from leftover that people just do not care about, and that's just with what we currently have right now. Um, crime, my husband's Jeep has been stolen out of our driveway twice. Um, my car has been broken into. Uh, we had, there's been other situations in the neighborhood as well, um, and that's been in the last five years. By adding more of the population, you obviously hope that they're not deviant people, but you know, that doesn't happen when you increase the population. And so I am just here to say that I do oppose it. If we, if it is going to go through, if we could encourage parking permits for our neighborhood, because again, part of that is people coming from the trailer park or from the apartments from the park itself and stand in our parking lot. And again, kids are running around like crazy, having strangers in the neighborhood. It's very concerning. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so now what we do is I see if staff, if the council has quite further questions of, um, staff, and then we'll move into the closing statements by the applicant.
Madam Mayor, oh, go ahead.
Jinx. Madam Mayor, um, I just had a question. Can you help us with this, with the process? So let's say the rezone goes through, then do we see this again? Or is this as part of design review and it's done? Help us understand what happens next.
Um, Madam Mayor, members of the council, so for the rezone, if the rezone goes through, then after that, due to for the design review application, they'll need a design review that will be reviewed administratively because this is only forty-five units. It would go to a design review commission hearing if it was fifty or more units. At that time, if, when a design review admin application is noticed out, so, uh, within a certain radius, neighbors are noticed and they can appeal that application, which could go to hearing then.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just to follow up, like, basically, although this is a rezone, this is, this is really it. So once this goes through, city councils are going to see this again.
I want to jump in there because, um, as our staff said, if the design review administrative decision is appealed.
Then it would come back.
It comes back. So it goes to the commission, and then you have seen, the council has seen design review appeals. So you see that again.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for staff. What, do we have any context? Because to me, I think it checks a lot of box of in our, um, in our overall planning strategy, it's close to an activity center. It's a long transit next to a park. Do we have any kind of historical context as to why this wouldn't have been considered in the, um, citywide? Code changes, why this wouldn't have been designated, um, for the higher density zoning at that time?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so with the modern zoning code rewrite, um, the modern zoning code only rezone certain areas within a citywide conversion. So for example, only R one C parcels that were rezoned were those within an eighth of a mile of our best-in-class transit routes. So for example, like State Street, Fairview, Vista corridors. And for this area, for the rezone, like the city has changed in population as we have heard. And, um, the housing needs have increased, um, as well for our city.
Madam Mayor, can I piggyback off that question? You know, council member, while it's asked about changes, it's my understanding that, um, Route twenty-four, the Eustick Maple Grove route did not exist, uh, that it was introduced in the twenty-twenty-three changes that went to effect in twenty-twenty-four, and that connects the village to Town Square Mall on Eustick. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, council members, that is correct.
Madam Mayor, a couple of questions. So I think I maybe have some different interpretation as far as the changes go, um, what the changes needed. That it takes a change for us to rezone something. My understanding is this is in a mixed-use, um, future land use map. So we have anticipated that there would be a change in here at some point. And within that mixed-use, uh, future, uh, land use map, this is one of the zones that would be eligible, um, to change to.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, yes, that is correct. The mixed-use land use designation supports, um, the R two zone within this area.
And it's not so much that when we did our modern zoning code, that we went through every single lot in the city and changed every single lot to the exact code. There were some that uniformly changed. Um, but then there's also our, our future land use map that anticipates changes happening in zones and what may be appropriate in that particular zone.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that is correct.
So I have been on, um, some different hearings before in the past where there's been development agreements, and sometimes in a development agreement, we may be able to, you know, max out a height. We may be in a development agreement, be able to protect an easement on a pathway or something along those lines. But also my understanding is that that development agreement needs to be established in the planning and zoning meeting. So if that wasn't established during the planning and zoning meeting, we wouldn't be putting a new development agreement on here. Otherwise, it would have to go back to the start. Am I understanding that correctly? Or do we have in this? I don't think we have in this council's capacity to put a development agreement if planning and zoning hadn't already instated one.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that is correct.
Okay. Uh, so when this does go to design review, there are some parts of code that are established as far as if there's going to be this type of housing, this many units, they have to have a certain amount of parking. So it will have to follow all of our existing parking guidelines within our zoning code. That's correct.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that is correct.
And when it would go through that process, we would also have to update any sort of standards. So like the sidewalk potentially that would be along Five Mile, I'm guessing that at that point is when that would be, you know, changed so that it would be a detached sidewalk that you see in some other areas along the side. Am I getting that correct as well?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that is also correct.
But not something we're doing in here because we're only looking at the rezone. We're not actually looking at the design, you know, of the application.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that is correct as well.
Okay. And that's also when they would do the tree mitigation plan, all those other types of things would happen there.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, I will have some questions for the applicant, but that's good for staff.
Madam Mayor. Just some clarifying questions for staff. I had mentioned the height before and just want to clarify, if we did not rezone, it stays at the R one C. The current, the, it allows for three-stories building, three-story buildings. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that is correct. Three stories not to exceed forty feet.
Okay. And, um, and this new zone that if it were to be approved to R two, it would allow up to four stories not to exceed forty-five feet. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much. Now we'll hear, um, closing statement from the applicant.
Okay. Um, so I'm just going to address some of the comments and concerns. So first off, the, the property is not for sale. We actually own the property. So, so there's, there's that. So turning it into a park or whatnot, um, probably, probably not. Five Mile, um, and Eustick is now a collector. So that, that would also support the higher density and more traffic in the area. This area, this, this parcel is in a neighborhood activity center. So this rezone would support that vision. Let's see. There were some comments on the, the amount of open space that we're offering this, the concept plan. I don't know. You can bring that up for me real quick. Um, but we are offering point three-one acres or thirty-three percent of the site will actually be open space, which is fair amount of open space for their small little parcel. And, and to add to that, um, we will be required to comply with the landscape requirements set forth by the city. We do also plan to heavily line that southern property boundary with trees and, and, um, you know, maybe some evergreens or whatnot. Just to really shield, shield the, the, the people there to the south, the neighbors to the south. Let's see, we are putting in a ten-foot detached sidewalk on Five Mile. So it'll eventually make that area, as it develops out, a little bit safer. So we're kind of starting that trend. I, I believe Kumba Park has a detached, I want to say. But so, so we are eventually going to, yeah, that area will eventually become a little bit more pedestrian-friendly. Let's see, um, the development of this project, um, or of this parcel will add ice to the street, making this area, uh, more safe actually, um, than just a vacant lot. So there is a benefit to that. Let's see. The R two zone will also help facilitate more attainable homes, um, at a, at a more, you know, kind of affordable price point. Which, and you know, which the city is wanting and needing, and, and this project will also reduce sprawl. And I think that's all I got.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Madam Mayor. So there were some questions and concerns about trees. They did kind of have like a circle where they thought one of the trees was going to be, it kind of looks like it's in an open area there. I'm wondering if there is any, I know that you'll have to follow the tree mitigation standards that we have here at the city. I'm curious if you are envisioning having the ability to retain any of the existing mature trees on the property.
Mayor and council member, yes. Uh, I mean, we've looked into that. I don't, I don't know, uh, if, if that's going to be the case, given where, you know, our current layout, how it kind of sets. But we are required to mitigate. So, I mean, this, this, this development will have significantly more trees than what is currently on the parcel.
Sure. Yeah, just some of those kind of mature trees, you know, I think we could all identify with the concern of like losing a mature tree. And also if I lived in one of these houses, I would want to have, you know, that mature tree as well. I guess there, I am curious if there's been any thought into some of the preliminary drawings and concepts that you put forward of being able to design around any of those trees.
We can look into that. Yeah.
Um, and then just a couple more questions. You're going to go through design review. And you, you're going to have to work through the process with staff on getting a few of these things done. You've got this tiny little corner over there that doesn't seem like it has a whole lot of use. I've been looking at, um, our pathways master plan. And it does kind of look like potentially it jumps from one side of the canal to another, you know, depending on what street, stretch it is. And like all that depends on, you know, what agreements we can get, you know, and all sorts of different things there. In that design review process, would you be agreeable to protecting any of that corner if there was going to be a future, um, pathway that ran through?
Um, yeah, I, yeah, I think we were at one point in time anticipating a pathway, and then we figured out it's on the other side because.
Okay, great. Yeah, my guess is that like there's not a whole lot of use in that tiny little corner. And so if there was potentially a pathway that went through, you know, that that wouldn't affect, well, it certainly wouldn't affect any of the development. But, you know, other than maybe a garden shed, you were going to stick in that corner.
It's, I think it's ten feet.
And then just to kind of confirm one more time, um, again, we don't have the purview to do this in this meeting. But your plan is for thirty-five feet building. Even if you can go higher, you would have to go a further setback in, and that would reduce the amount of units. And the plan at this point is close to this conceptual design, but at thirty-five feet.
Mayor, council member, um, yes. So this, this is, this is the elevation. This is the plan that we, we, we want to submit for design review, um, and we intend to, um, and that is at thirty-five feet.
Great, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Hi, thank you for being here tonight, and I just wanted to call out, so on this visual, we don't see a basketball court, and that came up in a number of comments. Can you talk about the amenity spaces? And is there a two, two amenity requirement you're trying to hit with those? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, Mayor, council member. Um, so, yep, we, we had originally thought that a, a, a cool use of the hammerhead would be a basketball, like a half-court basketball, um, but in hearing the, the comments, um, we, we took that out. So, uh, yeah, it is just now a hammerhead. But, uh, yeah, we do plan on putting, um, a fire pit kind of in that larger open space near the, you know, that larger area. And then we do plan on having some seating areas near that kind of west side where the, the triangle portion is. Um, and then we all obviously have pathways running through the development. Start to add to that, we're, we're wanting a little bit more of a passive amenity package.
Madam Mayor. Uh, clarifying, clarifying question. I believe, are these going to be rentals or will they be able to be purchased?
Um, Madam Mayor, um, council member, um, yeah, right now they are, we're intending for these, these to be rentals.
All right, thank you. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Um, Madam Mayor. I move approval of C R twenty-five dash eighteen, a request for a rezone for approximately two-point-two-two acres at twenty-nine eleven North Five Mile Road from R one C to R two.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Um, I should have explained, so somebody will make a motion. Now they'll have a discussion. When there's not a tie vote, I don't vote. So this is council deliberating now on the motion that's on the table. Discussion?
Madam Mayor. It's this, uh, let's see, I, this site is along an arterial roadway. It's next to a great community park. It's within an area for long-range planning that identifies for more compact walkable housing near existing infrastructure. By, it's, it is one of my values, and I think reflected in the city's, um, development code. That by developing this way, we allow folks to spend less time in their cars, getting to schools, businesses, or recreation, um, that they might want to be traveling to. This preserves our clean air and puts less pressure on our existing infrastructure. Um, I do understand the worry about new develop, how new development could, um, affect nearby homes. Um, and we had, I, I heard your concerns tonight. I thank you for joining us. I also heard, um, and read the concerns of the written correspondence that we received in advance. Addressing the, the Dun City parking traffic and neighborhood character. I think that with this zone, the, um, neighborhood transition standards, I know that it requires setbacks, limits on lighting and parking near single-family properties. This all helps to protect the neighborhood character and privacy. So, and approving the rezone now ensures that any future project must meet those standards. It focuses growth in the areas already equipped to handle it while maintaining, um, the protections that matter most to nearby residents. I would also ask that for the administrative review or for the design review team, that we see what we can do to protect existing trees, respect the privacy where possible of the residents abouting the development. Um, and I'd ask staff to look into a parking study in the area that the neighbors discussed. If it's possible to add residential permit parking area or limit parking if they are being impacted by the parking of the, of the park. of the park users. And then also to clarify for the residents, we don't have control over the streets. So I know that there was talk about like adding a turn lane or median or something like that. That would, that's an ACHD agency decision. But we, we work closely with them and, and I'd be happy to reach out and ask for their review, a traffic study review in that area.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I, I agree with everything that Council Pro Tem said. I would also add that it's in a established neighborhood activity center. It's actually activity center that I've been using since I was a little kid. There used to be a baseball card shop there and we used to ride along Eustick Road from the church down the road and go buy, pull weeds and then buy baseball cards with the money that we made from pulling weeds. I, I, there's a couple of things I do want to note. I would like to put a development agreement on here tonight that would have limited to 35 feet. I have faith that the developer will keep it to 35 feet. And that would have needed to have happened at an earlier meeting. I also would like to have put a development agreement on there to protect an easement for our future pathway along Settlers Canal, if that does end up being the side. Again, that would need to have been established in a future meeting, but I do think it sounds like we're amendable to doing that in that, in that corner lot. And to continue conversations, I think with the city Boise Parks and Rec on, is there a possibility for anything else in that sliver of a corner lot that may not have a lot of use on that property, but might actually be able to add, you know, some value to the community garden and Comba Park to extend it where possible? So I, I expect those conversations to, to continue. I also appreciate a council member said bringing up the tree mitigation. And, and I don't know that it's possible, but I think that whenever we can protect a mature tree, we should. It looks like it might end up in that area, but it also looks like a big spreading tree. And so, you know, I don't have the, the eyes on the ground to figure that out. But I know that we do have a tree mitigation plan that we'll have to put in place. And I would ask that we continue to put the trees along that far edge that we can build in, you know, some of that privacy and some of the wildlife protection that, that the neighbors have asked for as well. I think I had a couple of other comments on here that I made notes about. I do think that Five Mile, I've been on that road, you know, quite a bit recently. And I have noticed people even passing each other in that center turn lane, going faster and getting around a group of traffic to get back in there. And it's a little bit terrifying. And I do think that, you know, this is on our radar, this is on ACHD's radar. I would encourage the neighborhood to continue to be in conversation with ACHD. Cause I think that I can't remember who brought it up, but there, there probably is a case to be made for having some mediums in, medians in that area to prevent, you know, turning or going around or piling up in those areas. And we see those in different parts, parts of the city. And Five Mile with the increased traffic on there is certainly one where we do want to slow down and those medians can do that. Certainly something that we can be working on with ACHD as well. But again, I would encourage you to, to share your voices in that process. I do, I do want to note that like, I would, I would love to be able to expand that park. I think that that's a really great idea. There's maybe a tiny chance to do that in a little bit of that sliver of the area in the corner. I don't know what the possibility is there, but that's also not the application that was presented in front of us today. So by right, the developer can build, could build a R, R1C immediately right now. And they could actually build buildings taller than the 35 foot buildings that they're proposing. And they would be a little bit less dense, but they could potentially be taller in that area. And, and for their setbacks, you know, if they do get to that taller height above 35 feet. And so I, I just wanted to note that, that that's not the application and the private property rights. And Idaho doesn't allow us to tell the developer that you can't build here. Because we want to be able to use it at a park. It's up to them to decide whether they would want to sell at what price to anybody, whether that's the city or anybody else that's there. And so I, I understand that want, I understand that need, but that's not the application that's in front of us tonight. So again, I appreciate you all coming down. I know this isn't the outcome that you wanted to hear. I know it's big changes in your neighborhood and that can be difficult. But I do see an apartment, some apartments here, not apartments, but townhomes here that are rentals that will have kids that are living there, that will be walking down to, you know, it's probably not a baseball card shop anymore because that's not popular, but whatever ice cream they're getting down the road over to the Boise Urban Garden School. I do think that has the ability to bring good neighbors into the neighborhood. And I do think that is a good development with pathways all around the outside that's encouraging people to live in a, in a great place. And I do think it's a good looking development. I appreciate the pathways around the outside because I do think it encourages that outdoor play that's so important to our kids and our families.
Madam Mayor. I think. Microphone went off there. Well, I thank the neighbors for participating in this process the entire time, not just tonight. I know there's a lot of neighbors that aren't here tonight that participated, whether in planning and zoning or through the correspondence that we get. And we read all of that, the hundreds of pages that we get. So I want to thank you. I, while I do represent District Four in Southeast Boise and very familiar with this area, I've lived in four of the six council districts. And this was the first one I lived in in the mid 90s. Less than a half a mile away as the crow flies from this, this location. Visited the Eustick Merc to get milk in the mornings before school, that kind of stuff. So this is a great area. My daughter did Irish dance there in the Aurissons Shopping Complex there for a little bit too. So we drove out there. So I'm very familiar with the area. And, and so I appreciate that it is, it's an area that's been developed in a certain way. And it's been that way for quite some time. Our city is growing dramatically, as is the rest of the valley. So all the development that you may not see, because we don't like to drive 30 minutes west of here very often. There's a lot of change happening in our valley. And I think about the need for more attainable housing. Housing prices are always heavy on my mind for future generations like me that want to be able to stay here in Boise. But I wanted to address a few of the great comments that were, that were made tonight. I appreciated the idea to come, come forward and ask for upgrades to this Comba Park. I think being able to be engaged and participate in that is awesome. One of the things that our city does have a goal in is increasing park access for our residents. And when we still have, we're still a little bit a ways from our goal to get 100% of our residents from a 10, a 10 minute walk from a park. We got about 26% to go. A couple of those areas are in my district throughout this, this district as well, District One. And we have eight undeveloped park sites right now. So we have a little bit of a backlog. And I wanted you guys to know that I love the idea, but this, the nature of where we're at and, and the revenue there is tough if the property was for sale. I, just for Council President Nash's benefit, kind of wanted to express that thought from, from my end. Crime and traffic do come up a lot with new developments. It's one of those things, it's kind of uncertainty brings fear. You don't know exactly who those people are going to be, they're going to move in. You know, we talked, someone mentioned neighborhood character tonight. That, that character is really defined by the neighbors. Otherwise, it would just be a bunch of empty structures, right? And I think about the types of homes that an average Boisean, a nurse, a teacher, a first responder would, would be able to get. And it's probably not the, the same type of home that neighbors next door have right now. If there were new single family homes of that density, they would probably be out of reach. And we've seen that throughout the city. And so I do believe that, you know, this is attracting average Boisean of today. And then I would note, you know, I am a big bus evangelist and I, I know a lot of Boiseans haven't ridden the bus before. It's a cultural change. It's new. I rode it for two years and I, and I love it. And being on a transit route, I think is a big difference for this area. I don't have transit in my neighborhood. So this neighborhood is automatically better than mine right now in terms of my opinion. And just much better suited for people to be able to get around without the cost of extra vehicle ownership. I have two vehicles. If I lived on a transit route, I could have one and that would save me a lot of money. And I would just like to express some comments. I appreciated the comments that Council Member Hallie Burton, some of the things we'd like to see. And I really appreciate, you know, the, the candid conversation here and some of the changes that have already been made by the developer, like the basketball courts. But I do trust that they'll take these recommendations to heart. That Western segment, I think, has a lot of potential for a pathway across the canal. So if I think about first through third grade Jordan over there off of Montana Street, being able to get to Comba Park, going down Montana, crossing the canal, getting onto this property and getting over in the future at some day, I think is really, would be really cool. And then just in terms of amenities as well, just throwing this out there, community garden, always, always nice, always nice amenity. And then just would be interested in future discussions that you have before design review or wherever it goes. If you would like the ability to be able to have access out of your backyards to pathways in this development and consider that. You may not want to have a gate and access that, but you might want to be able to, to cross through this property. It's something to consider. I think it's something worth asking while we're in this process. To be able to have safer access to Comba without even having to be on Five Mile. So those are just some of my thoughts and why ultimately I'll be voting in favor of this motion.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, first of all, I, I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. And please thank your neighbors also for the comments that they submitted as Council Member Morales said, we do read through all those comments and we, and we see those ahead of time. We get a lot of feedback saying, what does it matter? They're going to vote on this anyways. And, and let me tell you what your impact did affect. It affected where we're taking a look at the environmental impact of asking our design review team to look at those trees being on the property. It affected not having that basketball court there. You, you're also having an impact of looking at traffic calming and looking at a potential study, traffic study there. So coming here and your comments that you submit, I just want people to know it does matter. Had those comments not been made, had you not been at P and Z and council tonight, they probably wouldn't be included and considered as well. And you know, we know that these developments, they have, they're real concerns to neighbors and to us. And they do affect the character and they do affect traffic. And those are real issues that you guys will be looking at. And that's why tonight we're trying to do our best to try to find that best middle ground of how do we stand up more housing? Because housing is a crisis across the country. And for next generations to be here within the city without having to live out an hour or two hours away to come work within the city, we need to stand up some housing, be it those that are rent or those that can be bought. And I, I like the fact that when Jimmy mentioned that we'll continue to work with ACHD and we urge you as well to work with ACHD for calming measures. And those median installations on Five Mile. I live off of Overland, had the same issues of people coming in and out of that middle lane. They put some of those median, I don't know what they're called. I'm going to call them installations to help really guide people down the road and to prevent that from happening. And it significantly reduced the number of accidents we saw on the road because you don't see people crisscrossing lanes or trying to turn in front of one another. You know, we've heard comments tonight on the height and I was concerned about the height as well. But understanding that if we leave the zone as it is, as an R1C, it'll still be at 35 feet, up to three stories. And so that, that wouldn't change. I really appreciate Council President Pro Tem Sted mentioning the protection of the existing trees and the privacy to be taken into effect and for our design review to make those considerations when they're doing the admin review. Yeah, and again, I want to thank you all for coming out. I know that being out here does have an impact on the decision and the design and what that development will look like. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, a few comments. First of all, thank you for coming. I'm constantly inspired by Boiseans who spend their time and their energy to, you know, continue to make our city what it is today. And, and you've all mentioned that you've lived here a while and you've seen the city change. And I know those of us who have have seen it as, as well, and just appreciate your continued involvement. And I hear you, I hear you on a lot of these things. You know, living in West Boise, we have a, we have a really unique development pattern because at this point it is all infill. It's these little pockets and this is an odd shaped pocket. It's, it's, uh, it's no one's fault that it is, it just is. And I, I think we need to recognize that, that there's some, there's some limitations here based on the actual dimensions of the property. You, you've heard today, this is going to pass. I, I'm going to vote against this for a number of different reasons. First of all, I want people to live in West Boise. I think it's a great place to live. I live there. Jordan, you can come in anytime, move on in. But I think we need to be very, very judicial about upzoning. And the city went through a massive process for four years. Many, many, many hearings, hearings here, hearings at P and Z, on whether we were going to change the zoning code or not. And part of the reason for that was consistency. People wanted predictability, they wanted consistency. And we said to our neighbors, pay attention to this because this is going to be the new zoning code, it's going to be the modern zoning code and this will be predictable. This is not predictable. To my count, this is the third one that we're doing in less than a year. To me, that is not what, what Boiseans signed up for when they were, when they were looking at the zoning code. I understand why it has to happen, why the, why the developer wants to do that here. But at the end of the day, we made a promise for consistency. And if we continue to do this pocket upzoning, I don't think we're keeping true to the promise of what the zoning code was meant to be. So I'll be voting no. I think that's everybody. All right, clerk, will you call the roll?
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willetts.
No.
Forn, favor, one imposed, motion carries.
All right, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for coming out tonight.